If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are going to start with approving the minutes from the January 23 workshop.
This meeting is being recorded.
Yes, absolutely. So moved? Steve, I think you need to mute. Or did you just say you're not on at all? You're not on at all? Okay, never mind.
There was another person that joined that. I just muted them.
Oh, thank you. Okay, January 23 workshop meeting minutes. Everyone had a chance to be through them?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any edits, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to regular business. So the first item is the Dutchess County Self-Inured Workers' Compensation Plan. The village of Red Hook has been a participant in the Dutchess County Self-Inured Workers' Compensation Plan for many years. I don't know the year that we joined in. And this is just an annual agreement that is sort of part of the... It's tricky because if we want to get out, it's a bigger deal. We actually have to formally decide, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a little interesting that there's an annual thing. But I did actually look back in prior years. The very last page shows the contribution for 2025. And that is up from the last three years, but it's actually down from '21 and '20. So I think we go up and down based on the overall losses in the plan. And I am pretty sure with reasonable certainty that we would not get this coverage for less. Doesn't mean we can't look at it at some point, but... So this is just, in theory, this is just something that we have to do each year to acknowledge that we're in this program and that we want to keep going. So I will make a motion that... No, I'm not going to do that. I would ask for a motion to authorize me to sign this participation agreement for the Dutchess County Self-Inured Workers' Compensation Plan for 2025. So moved? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Oh, Charlie too.
All good? Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next one is Allstate Power Systems. This is an annual maintenance contract for our three... Actually, it shouldn't be four.
It's like two, four.
One, two, three. Three. No, there's three. I forgot to add it. Okay, so we'll have to do an addendum. So... And the reason why we'll need to do an addendum is we now have two generators at the wastewater treatment plant because we have two wastewater treatment plants. So this is for the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant, the one we have here. We have a generator here at Village Hall, and we have one at the water plant. These three numbers are exactly the same as they have been for the last three years. So there's no price increase. The increase... So we'll just have to do an addendum to this one because it doesn't include the second generator, the wastewater treatment plant. But I will take a motion to authorize me to sign this agreement with Allstate Power Systems.
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. The next... Just let me know if you want me to do it real quick.
Yes, fine.
Yep. The next item is Panda. And I realize, I actually printed out the 2011 agreement, and it's in the clerk's office. This is an agreement that's been in place for, I don't know, well, since 2011. And this is what gets us, the fine gentleman in the back who is recording us, and they put us on their YouTube channel and their website. Are you... And you're back on TV, correct?
Yep.
Channel 1303?
Not sure the exact number.
I think it's 1303.
Yeah.
We'll check. And this is basically updating the agreement. Thank you. And the idea... So this will make the agreement good until 2029, and this will also have an annual update based on numbers. So if you go to the... Where is it? Actually, it's the last... It's actually the page two. It shows the cable data update. And so that gets updated every year. And then the percentage is based on what percentage our subscribers are to the total for the five municipalities. As you might imagine, having all five municipalities participate matters. If any one of them were to pull out, it would be disruptive to the plan. I will say that the village of Reinbeck reviewed this this week, week before? I think it was the end of January. And they are adding a clause, and I actually requested that they include both villages. If you'll note on page two, the... Under number three, about the third line down, it says, "Each of the five municipal partners shall be required to confirm their approval by majority vote by November 15 of each calendar year." And that's related to the budget. And November obviously works for the town, but it doesn't count, so it doesn't really work for the villages. So Reinbeck is creating a... What are they calling it? An addendum, an additional clause that says that the village will confirm their approval by April 1st, which is much more in line with when our budget timing is. And Eric... And I'm going to get his last name wrong, so I'm not going to say it out loud. It's terms of the...
Reinbeck.
Sorry?
Reinbeck.
Reinbeck. Thank you. He was at Reinbeck's meeting and indicated that that change in timing is acceptable to him, that they can work with that. So I would like to add that addendum as well. And just going through the things that... The sections that have been changed. Section 1.02 franchise agreement. In the 2011 agreement, it lists out everybody's agreement. This one just sort of says we're referencing those agreements as opposed to listing them out. Section 2.07 record monthly municipal meetings. It's really just an acknowledgement of different technology. And so it's just adjusted some of the language as to how they're going to keep the meeting records or recordings. And then section 3.01, that's budget-related, and it's literally just updating it to... Updating it for this agreement. And 6.00 is the term of the agreement, so that obviously changes. And Exhibit 2 is an amended list of inventory. So after the signature page, you have a whole bunch of inventoried items that Panda has. And then the last is the exhibit with the information for 2024, on which... So this gets updated, and I think the timing is going to be a little funky given that we approve in April and the towns approve in November. So I'm not sure if we're approving in April for the following year or for the year as in. Probably for the following year. So it'll be a little off. I don't think there's an expectation of significant change in the budget part. I think it's the percentages and how they change. So we'll probably just be a year behind in that changing. Any questions?
I have a question about the allocation basis for the total charge. It says spectrum data. So I'm assuming those are not television customers but data customers from spectrum in each municipality? Is that how they're...
Those are cable... Those are spectrum subscribers.
So not data, it's just spectrum television?
It's data from spectrum about their subscriber numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just a kind of... I always think of my data and television kind of as two different things.
Oh, you're thinking internet data.
Yeah, that's like, it's not clear.
I don't think that's what...
Okay.
I think it's cable subscriber data rather than using data through the internet. Because it's spectrum that has the public access channel that...
Right, that seems like kind of a basis that makes sense, you know, is the subscribers who can actually get that, not someone who's getting high-speed internet, but not a television subscriber. It's just not clear how it's labeled.
I mean, I do think that it is reasonable for us to have a conversation about the changing technology. I will say that if you speak to folks of a certain generation, they still like their TV, and there are people who watch our proceedings on the cable channel. So I would say by 2029, it's highly probable that we should be looking for a completely different setup. I mean, obviously, having it online and having it on YouTube is great. If you haven't watched our proceedings, it's very interesting to watch us up here on camera. But I also think that there's enough of a population right now for us to continue with this setup for the next... There is also... There is a cancellation opportunity. That's in the main agreement. I think it's 90 days, if I remember correctly. But there is a cancellation option in the contract. Any... Well, I guess I'll take them... I will make the motion that... No, I'll do that differently. I will ask for a motion to authorize me to sign the rider to the Panda agreement with the four other municipalities.
With addendum.
With the village addendum changing the agreement for the budget to April 1st.
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And before we vote, just to read the section on termination. "Any municipality may withdraw from this agreement on 90 days prior notice effective the end of each calendar year, provided notice has been given to Panda and the remaining municipalities prior to October 1st." "The studio equipment, if any facility equipment and portable equipment shall remain owned by Panda for the benefit of the remaining municipalities. This agreement is intended to survive such withdrawal as to the remaining municipalities, provided that if more than one of the five municipal partners withdraws, the remaining municipality shall have the option to terminate this agreement at any time upon 30 days' notice to Panda and the remaining municipalities." So FYI, we have that option. Should we... Because 2029 is... What are we, in five? So that's four years from now. The world could be different in many ways. Okay, any other questions or comments? Then I'll take a vote. I'll go down the line. Kim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mel Corca?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And a aye, so... Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is... This is a bond resolution. And this bond resolution goes... Is for the expansion of the sewer system, the Phase 2. This is... This comes out of the engineering report. The engineering report has an estimated project amount of... Estimated project amount of $19.5 million. And there's another $300,000 that's related to...
I'm so sorry, there's no audio on this. Should we have one person turn on their audio? Probably, right?
That's how it works, yeah.
Yes, I should do my audio?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Opening in progress.
Except you're now muted. Okay.
Can you hear now? I'm so sorry. I didn't... The chat wasn't coming up.
Well, somebody probably has to say something for them to know if we can hear.
It looks... She's green now, so...
Can we hear?
There's one guest, and... Okay, great. Thumbs up, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Apologies that it was...
And thank you for... That would be a very tedious recording with...
That's why we have Panda.
Yes, and that's why we have Panda, yes, thank you. We're grateful you're here. Okay, so the bond resolution. This is, again, based on the engineering report from June of 2024 for Phase 2 of the sewer project. In the report, the project is estimated to be $19.5 million. There's another $200,000 to $300,000 in some sort of fees or something that I don't really understand. And so it just seemed easier to round up to $20 million because those numbers will be different by the time we get there. The reason why we're doing a bond resolution now is twofold. One, which is rather crucial, is in order for us to apply for New York State grant funding, specifically WIA funding, which we have not yet applied for, this is one of the requirements, is we need to have a bond resolution. The other is, should we so choose? If we have agreed and passed this bond resolution, we have the option down the road to take out a loan, a ban, which would be... Is a five-year loan for a smaller amount that would allow us to proceed with engineering. Right now, we really can't proceed until we get some sort of funding. We're going to be applying to... For a county infrastructure grant that requires you to get started within a year. And it seems very... I think the max you can get is $500,000. And so that's a perfect grant opportunity for the engineering, preliminary engineering for the project. And... But we have no guarantee that we'll get that. But this will then give us the flexibility to allow for it. Now, you all will need to approve that funding. And if you'll note, in the notice itself, it acknowledges the fact that we are going for grants, and we expect the project to cost less. The other piece also to share, as I think we've talked about before, when going for grant funding, grant funding is generally a percentage of your project size. So if you start sort of smaller and say, gee, we want to go bigger because we've got a certain amount of grants, the grant amount that you've got does not change as your project gets bigger. If you start big and go smaller, it might be reduced, but it might not. So the best option for the most grant funding is to go for the... I mean, this is a project that, all else being equal, would be a great project to proceed with, as is. I would say, given the initial response of the bipartisan infrastructure, that on initial application, we did not qualify for it based on the general income information, which is why we're doing an income study. And then also, it's not clear what federal funding is going to look like. And so this gives... This will give us a little bit of time to see what that... See how that plays out. And it certainly gives us the opportunity to go smaller. I would say that seems likely at this point, that we will end up with a smaller project. And as I think you all know, we are using the capacity that we have added to the village. So if we want to add anybody of any size, we need to expand the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant. The town has expressed significant interest in being a client of ours, a customer of ours. And so they would fund the portion of the capacity that they would take. And then the housing project on Cooking M Farm needs capacity. And then there are two other potential housing developments that need that capacity as well. So that is why... And so the timing, on the one hand, it feels like it's far in advance; on the other, it actually goes pretty quick. The New York State grant funding timing is they'll take grant applications up to the end of May. So we don't have a huge amount of time. If we pass this bond resolution tonight, there's a permissive referendum. So... And that's a 30-day period after it's been published. So that is why it is in front of you today. That is why... That is why... That is the purpose. And I believe that this project is sort of the foundation of several other projects that we would like to proceed with. So I would like... Am I signing this?
It's a motion.
It's a motion. So it's a motion to adopt the resolution. So I would like to make the motion to adopt this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. And any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to do a roll call. Go the other way. Charlie?
Aye.
Mel Corca?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I forgot to mention it requires a supermajority, so you guys... That was before. So that show you check the box. So that... I do not have any budget adjustments for this evening. Reminding you that the workshop meeting is February 27. Oh, yes, absolutely. That's probably in my box, right?
And it is.
Okay. So I do have one added item, which is very exciting. I am... I... I don't know how to say this right. I am appointing Laura Avella to the planning board, and I'm asking for your approval of my appointment. Do you have... I asked her for a brief bio, and she said she wanted to go above and beyond. And one of the pieces of that that I love is... So she's on the house that they bought. It's the big white house on West Market. And she's done some research on the provenance of her house. And it was owned by a barge operator, I think she called it. And she got a picture of the barge. So she's planning to frame that and put it in her house. It's just very fun. So I think she brings... I think she's interested in engaging. I think she's looking forward to... And I believe I shared, but maybe I didn't. David Pearson resigned from the planning board, which is why we have an opening.
Oh, I got to know that.
Yeah, I think he resigned at the end of December.
Okay.
So I think Laura would be a terrific addition to the planning board. She has met with Lara to understand what the role is. She met with me, and I found her to be very engaging. And I think she'll be a terrific addition. So I'll take a motion.
Just see another term.
Ah, so the term ends April 5th in 2027. So what's that, is it a two-year term? Or no, she's filling out a term. And how long are the terms, do you know?
Five.
Five, okay, five years.
So leave.
She asked... Yeah, she asked. And I know the town board is seven years. And I couldn't remember if it was three or five. But so she would be filling out the rest of David's term. So I would take a motion for the board to approve the appointment of Laura Avella to the planning board.
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Will we have a chance to meet her?
Absolutely. I mean, you're... You can go knock on her door if you'd like. I... Yeah, sure. I can ask her to come to our March meeting if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. And as she noted, you now know the name of her dog and kind of what it looks like, so you might see them roaming around as they, I'm sure, are walking, as most dog owners do, all over the place. Okay, any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm not going to... Ah, yes. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'll bet you have.
Thank you. And then just to the next board meeting. The beauty of February is it's got just the right number of days in the month, so the following month is exactly the same. So our March board meeting is March 10. Okay, now we move on to department committee reports. This is the opportunity for our Madam Treasurer to give her the report.
Good evening, board trustees. Just turn the mic on and keep talking, and they'll hear you. This is my treasurer's report for tonight, February 10, and I am about to share the account balances as of January 31, 2025. In the general fund, we have $1,112,895.78. Water fund, $511,234.64. Our payroll clearing account had $45,823.18. The sewer fund had $181,637.69. Hardscrabble account, $5,994.48. In the village green, there was $7,587.54. And our health insurance fund had $13,115.73. Our petty cash had $0. That is a very exciting development, which we will return to following the end of the report. The reserve checking balances are fire department, The police reserve, $17,935.05. The USDA reserve, $145,931.28. Highway reserve, $598.89. Snow reserve, $3,446.18. Tower reserve, $18,611.71. Unemployment reserve, $7,382.52. Court reserve, $3,466.26. And our office reserve had $1,021.95. Our monthly expenses for January were general fund, Our water fund spent $549,796.47. That's a large number because we had a lot of reimbursement from our WIA program account. The payroll clearing account spent $8,356.20. And the sewer account spent $17,356.6. So the petty cash account, which held steady at $52.93 for a long time due to our decision that we were going to not expend any more petty cash, was officially closed out with those funds being deposited into our coding related to postage because that's primarily what petty cash was used for. Petty cash probably dates back, I'm going to guess, at least 50 years, probably more. And with the advent of all of our amazing technological, electronic, and plastic forms of payment, it was no longer essential. So petty cash count, rest in peace.
Any word on gold? Treasurer's out for quite a while, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the treasurer? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now it's to me. Jen, I thank you. Every time I go through this book, it is incredibly helpful. All right, the police report for January 2025. Total number of incidents, 322. That's 184 in the village of Red Hook, 123 in... That's 184 in the Village of Red Hook, 123 in the Town of Red Hook and 15 in the Village of Tivoli. There were 119 water tower security checks. There were 88 uniform traffic tickets, 54 in the Village of Red Hook, 32 in the Town of Red Hook and two in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were nine in the Village of Red Hook, none in the Town of Red Hook and nine in the Village of Tivoli. And arrests, there were eight. There were four in the Village of Red Hook, four in the Town of Red Hook and none in the Village of Tivoli. That is the police report. I do not have the fire company's report of incidents for this evening. I do understand they had they had their annual dinner this past weekend. Here broadly, said it was a very nice affair, so. Other items, okay, so the WEA, the WEA water projects. The SCADA controls upgrade. So the system training act is has been held. Last meeting, I talked about the static IP address that was needed from our internet supplier. That has been secured. The latest is that apparently the internet speed is either not fast enough or it's not functioning properly. So that, I am working to figure out what the issues are so that I can speak intelligently with the frontier tech people to figure out what's going on there. And then the final inspection needs to be completed. And that was Avanti Construction. The final cost of this project is $390,078. There is actually some contingency in that contract. It's not clear to me yet whether or not that contingency will need to be used or will be. Worst case, these are the numbers. Best case is there's a little bit money to come back. Charing Graves Street water main replacement, physical work is complete. There are a few punch list items that remain, including there's a, there was a broken hydrant valve on Cherry Street and confirmation of final restoration. And that, of course, we won't, one won't know till the spring. And that contractor was Amity Construction. And the final cost for this project was $1,036,314.37. Water tank rehabilitation, this project is now complete, except for the contracted annual inspection to take place next summer. Regarding financing, so the total project costs are just shy of $2 million versus the original 1.8 million. The budget approved this increase when we accepted the low bid from Amity Construction for Cherry and Graves water main replacement. That was the third project that we accepted. There was a fourth project, but because of the costs, which we pretty much expected, we were not able to do the fourth project. Bless you. EFC originally provided financing for the difference between the 1.8 million and their grant. Their grant was for $1,080,000. I have requested additional financing to cover the additional 20,000, 200,000 for the project. That finding is, financing is not guaranteed. So if we are denied, I will be back to the board for an alternate plan. Sewer project one, phase one, which isn't really phase one since we have, since we adopted Red Hook Commons, but we're going to go with it. The major outstanding item is the single audit. We actually have received a draft that we are reviewing now. And there are findings. So this this single audit is for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2022. So that would have been, that was the year of transition. So I became mayor in May of 2021. So there are, there are some findings. We have reviewed them. We reviewed them in our finance meeting. And so when we get, when we get the official audit, I will share that with you and we'll share with you what what we have done to address the findings that they have. And then the other, there's, there's one final MWBE report from Carver Construction to be filed with EFC. The October to December 2024 report was filed, but Carver didn't make it a final report. So there will be at least one more. Sewer expansion, phase two. So an income survey is in process, which has the potential to increase our chances of getting the bipartisan infrastructure funding and other grants as well. We did receive word that we were awarded, and I can't remember if I told you so, a $2 million Mid Hudson Regional Economic Development Council Capital Improvement Grant for pro housing communities. You can see why I wrote that down. And so we have some paperwork to file, but that is, that is directly for the phase two sewer project. Bond resolution, which we've gone through, will be for the WEA project grant and other grant applications that we have. There is a county infrastructure grant that I mentioned as well. Our union contract negotiations, as you know, we we all agreed and signed the memorandum of understanding. So we're in the phase of getting the final contract language correct. I did, there were some final edits on the police contract. I have what I hope is the final final in my inbox right now. And then the DPW contract. So once I've confirmed that that has all the correct edits, I will sign it. And it'll be in the books and then and then the DPW contract will will follow. And then just a report on the library. I did attend the January 16 library board meeting. Their policy committee continues to work on creating and or updating policies. This month, the committee reviewed their website, reserve fund, telecommunications and airborne infections policies. Once they approve their policies, they also, their board member Martha Tepepa translates the policies into Spanish so that they have those available. There was a discussion around Tivoli and Red Hook library planning updates. They are moving forward toward working together. I I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I think it's just that they are collaborating and working together on projects or some, for example, the Big Read. Both libraries are doing the Big Read. And I think the current discussions are at the Tivoli Library Community Room, for example. The construction projects are complete. There was an understandable dip in foot traffic during construction, which is now bumped back up. Additional lighting will be added outside in in the ramp and children's garden area. The VFW contacted the library to offer to do a volunteer project. And so they will be patching and painting the third floor conference room. And then the volunteer tool on the Daily Catch website was discussed. There was also a discussion around what would be acceptable uses for renting out the community room. And for more detailed information, you can find their board packet on the library's website. It's redhooklibrary.org/BoardofTrustees. And you just have to look in the body of the of the verbiage to find the link to get to their packet. And so that is, that is my, that is my report. And that's it. So on to Deputy Mayor Teraball.
My report did not make the packet because I submitted them late because my meetings were on Thursday. So just so you guys have to look outside your, there in the folder. Okay, so Red Hook Together meets on the first Thursday of the month. The latest meeting was held over Zoom on February 6, 2025. February's presentation was on the Audubon International Sustainability Communities Group. The group asked attendees to fill out a three question survey describing what does 2025 look for your organization generally? As well as what does 2025 look for your organization's sustainability offerings? The group has assigned housing, public safety and emergency management and economic health and tourism as focus areas that they want the village to reflect on. They will be tracking progress on the focus areas in the living document. And these are links that are available through the agenda if you, if you want to read them. See below for the chart of assignments given to attendees of the Red Hook Together meeting.
Can I just ask a question? I don't see, is village government, is that just us or does that include Tivoli?
I think it's just us.
Okay.
Tivoli doesn't normally attend the Red Hook Together, the, you know, trustee from it, so.
I just, I was just curious if there was any connection with Tivoli. Thank you.
It's a good question to ask. For a review on the ongoing progress, the Red Hook Together subgroup has applied on behalf of the Red Hook community for a certification which requires the following three stages. Stage one identifies community strengths and areas needing improvement. Stage two incorporates community's goals into a long term vision plan. And in stage three, the community must report implementation of planned goals to secure certification, which according to a local news story was awarded this past September. So they're in the process now of sort of proving that the community is going through with the the vision goals. And so that's why they're checking in with everybody. So there are interesting documents if anyone wants to read them and sort of see what, you know, people are up to because.
There are a lot of areas. It is, it is a very comprehensive and lengthy list of of items. It's, it's a little hard to get your arms around.
And it's still, the living document is obviously still living. There's lots of, I just think it's, it's interesting to know that there are people working on it and that there's a lot of organizations that are adopting things. It's good for the public to to know that this is happening.
Absolutely.
And have access to it because not everyone is able to attend Red Hook Together. So Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee is currently inactive. The latest meeting was held on Wednesday, January 22 at Town Hall. The conversation was focused around the new proposed law, local law D specifically regarding cannabis and subdivisions.
And if I can just interject, I apologize, but just to point out that these are town laws. These are not village laws.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, yeah. And local law E regarding an updated smoking ordinance. On Wednesday, January 29, 2025, during the special town board meeting, the town board, as part of a larger reorganization, voted to make the EDC inactive. Sorry, I doubled up that. There has been a proposal made to establish a joint committee with the village and town of Red Hook. Once I have more information of proposed structure and or mission, I will share that with the village board. So there hasn't been any official, really, structure or mission or anything for us to share with everybody, but I just have to warn you, note, guys, a consideration.
And I can just add that, you know, you and I have had a couple of conversations in, you know, it's the town EDC meeting where a lot of the business activity in the area is in the village. And so at a certain point, I think you and I both thought, hmm, either the village should consider having our own EDC committee or we should consider some sort of collaboration. And so I guess now is because the timing of the town board for their reorganization, it was, this seemed to be the time, I guess, for them to make this decision. So I'm sure we will be having conversations about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And they usually do meet in the village hall. So I mean, it has always been, we have a certain amount of collaboration in that way, so. Okay, Duchess County Safety Action Plan Advisory Committee. The third meeting of this committee took place on January 27, 2024 in Poughkeepsie. We reviewed the latest data as well as learned how consultants are using public input and crash data to select priority locations. The plan will feature at least one recommended implementable improvement per municipality on a local or county owned road. It will also contain a more broad suite of improvements that are recommended generally. There is still time for the public to identify areas of safety concern through the map and survey tools which you can access at duchessny.gov/safetyactionplan. And I've gone through and and added things. I don't know if anyone else on the board has taken time to, you can go through the survey. They ask if there's any areas that, you know, concern you. And then they have a map where you can actually identify intersections or segments of roads that you feel would benefit from being improved. And the hope is that we can connect, this is not in my report, but that it can act as with federal dollars that will allow the county or or the municipality to improve those roads with funding.
And so the, the, this duchessny.gov/safetyactionplan is how you get there. But it also looks like you have a link in your report. So that'll be on the website when it gets uploaded.
It's already there.
It's already there.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah, so the Village of Red Hook Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 PM in Village Hall. There was discussion about the goals of the social media policy, developing Google Suite protocols, considering a website redesign and the next steps around updating website and email URLs. Discussion and progress on all items are ongoing.
And actually, I'd just add, we did get approval for redhookvillage.gov. So that'll be part of the discussion is to transitioning to redhookvillage.gov.
Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. January's meeting was held on February 6, January, February's meeting, apology. The group discussed the status of the Warming Center, which is a partnership between the community volunteers, Hudson River Housing and St. Christopher's Church. Discussion also covered community concern around the new federal administration objectives and how the committee can best serve vulnerable community members during the time. No actions were, to be undertaken by the committee, were proposed. A subpage has been added to the committee's webpage introducing the Indigenous History Project. And then the Village Public Works Department, there has been no revenue for the scrap metal program since my last report and snow removal and seasonal parking. Now that we've entered snow season, please remember, remember that there is no overnight parking on village streets and that items may get damaged by the plow trucks if they're left on the street edge. Also, if you have a sidewalk adjacent to your property, you are required to keep it clear of snow and ice within 24 hours after the end of a winter storm. And that actually includes the ramps to any street crossing that might maybe in front of your building because it's really important that the pedestrians can cross the street safely. So if you are adjacent to a street crossing, that is considered part of your sidewalk. And that is it, my reports. Thank you.
Okay, next up is trustee line.
Okay, let's start off with materials management. So in the month of January, the Village Highway Department collected 2.41 tons of recycling. That was made up of 1.06 tons of commingle, 0.51 tons of cardboard and 0.84 tons of paper. The village also collected, well, the village collected 3.21 tons of garbage, which was transported to Ukra at a total cost of $669.39, which is made up of $433.35 in tipping fees and a $24.92 fuel surcharge. But garbage was also transported via the village's arrangement with the Royal Dumpster Service and the dumpster that we use. So that costs the village $211.12 a month in fees.
Charlie, just to clarify, because I was looking at the $669.37. That's both the Ukra and the Royal Dumpster Service combined. Right? Because you got the 433 tipping fees and the 25 for fuel surcharge? Plus the 211.
Yes, plus the monthly fee, yeah.
Took me a minute. Okay, I know the numbers are in here.
That, I, yeah, you might have to rework that.
There's a different way to say that, yes.
The tonnage includes the dumpster. So we're all aware, there's a, there's an annual materials management report that we have to send in and that has to include all of the tonnage that we collect both.
Send it in where?
To the county.
Got it.
So, so that, that number is both the dumpster, which we have to make an estimate, of course, and what we haul over to Ukra.
Right. Yes. And over the course of the month, the village collected $3,507 on the sale of garbage tags, broken down as follows, $447 at Village Hall and $3,060 from the Red Hook Public Library.
Wait, what? That can't be.
It's pretty close. I think the, because it was 3,062.50 instead of 3,060?
Well, we changed it from 3,062.50 to 3,060 because 2.50 was.
They didn't sell that money. I don't think that's, check your, your chart. I don't think they sold that much. But it's just, I mean, that's incredible. All right.
It's awesome.
I'm sorry if I messed with something.
So it's 3,507 is what it says for total revenue?
Yeah.
I, I have here the report that was forwarded, you know, $1,650 worth of small tags, $1,410 for large tags, coming to $3,060.
Yeah, that's us on the right. On the left is the.
Oh, yeah, I got that switched around.
Yes, you did.
Oh, yeah.
I was really happy that they were plugging our.
The village library was too many.
Yeah, they were like really helping us out. I mean, they are very.
They are helping us out.
Yes, and they're helping the public. I mean, they serve the public. It's wonderful.
So the net of that was that it's 447 from the library and 3,060 at the.
There is a disclaimer for all numbers in my report. There is a disclaimer for all numbers in my reports.
Okay.
You were just testing us, Charlie. Make sure we're paying attention.
Yes. Maybe next month I will pay more attention. Okay. So now that we got that squared away, water treatment facilities report. So during the month of January, the water treatment facility treated 7,552,193 total gallons, which is an average of 240,393 gallons per day, and will have to take C3NDS work for it.
I will note that it is an increase from year ago, but it is a reasonable increase. I don't have the percentage in front of me. And it is certainly much more down to normal numbers. But we still have some analysis to do as to.
Yeah, but that difference between water pushed out into the system and the billing.
I would call it measuring because we do measure some that we don't bill.
Right. But yeah, for the, I mean, the last four months, it's been pretty stable and within this, you know, between 225,000 and 250,000 gallons per day, which is not crazy. But it is a little bit more than this time last year. So we also sent out three samples for bacteriological testing. And they all came back clean with no poliform or E. coli bacteria identified. And during the month of January, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium perchloride. And that comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day.
Looks like there's new locations for testing.
Yeah, they, they, they don't stay, they do.
Right. They do move around.
It's so that it's not always the same location for.
Right.
Kind of like a, like a sample as opposed to.
How do you choose those?
I think it's a variety of factors. One is to make sure it's in different parts of the.
Right. You want to sort of try and get as best a sample from different sections of.
And do they just knock on your door? Or do they, because this looks like someone's catching a snake. No, I mean, they could be coupled with, like, they always take one from Tradition's because that's where we're contracted to do that.
Yeah.
And then it could be that they're there to fix a meter and they just do it at the same time, or they may have, they may not come in.
Or have you noticed somebody reaching in through the kitchen window?
You can't like cause it. They could test my water.
You can call.
Okay. Yes.
Right. If you, if you thought something was different about it.
Yeah, that's happened.
Okay.
It doesn't exist in Red Hook. For Living Street, the second sample location?
That seems good.
Kitchen sink. I think maybe it's, may it be Livingston Street or something?
But Jen said it's Tradition.
I think it's in Tradition. My guess is that's in Tradition because one of the sampling locations is always in Tradition.
They have a streak of Living Street?
It does not exist in Google Maps.
Yeah.
I suppose. We're not going to go there.
Yeah. Maybe it's a building, like a building complex?
We, we will, we will follow up and we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
We will confirm.
We keep learning, which is wonderful.
Moving right along to Silk Hill Watershed Community and the village liaison with that group. And yes, sad story, the Silk Hill Watershed Community Leadership Committee was scheduled to hold a community meeting at the Almendorf on January 22. It was extremely cold that day. Apparently, the Almendorf's heating system failed. They weren't able to keep adequate temperature.
I can confirm that it was very cold because I walked over to go to the meeting.
Ah, dear.
And it was dark. So I said, I'm not crossing the street. I will turn around and go home. So my question, actually, a question for you is, I am obviously not on, not on the email list. So it is, what's the way to get on the list? Does one go to the website and sign up or?
Yes, I think you can do that or.
One asks the village liaison to add me to the list?
The village liaison would consider that part of his responsibilities.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, and they did manage to reschedule rather quickly. So they actually had the rescheduled community meeting on February 5th, so just last week. And I'll report on that next month. I was unfortunately unable to attend because I was sick. There have been no meetings of the Community Preservation Fund Committee that I'm aware of. And I did see something. Was there anything to report on utility billing?
Uh, it's the next page. After the water.
Thank you. So just going through the utility billing report for the month of January. Utility bills issued, $425.40. No penalties or finance charges issued. Utility payments received, $186,097.55. And accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of February 1st was $41,088.63. And there was one bill adjustment with a bill billed for water service in error. Water turned off?
It's turned up.
Billed for water service.
So they were billed for water service after their water was officially turned off.
Ah, yeah.
It wasn't turned off without our knowledge. It just didn't get registered in our system. So they got a bill.
Appropriately.
So they got a refund.
Seems fair.
And just as we were all on baby breath on this, it is Livingston Street, not.
I just, yes, I just found it.
Seems like it might.
It is one of the roads of Tradition.
Okay. And that's it for my reports.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Bradley Ricard.
Good evening. For the Village Green Committee, spring planting is underway. If you're interested in having trees planted, please reach out to us. We're looking to add trees to any of our village streets. So if you're out and about and see an open space, maybe in front of a new or old business, you can, you can send those suggestions to us as well as your own address. We are actively recruiting members. And if you're interested in giving back to your community but don't have a lot of time, this may be the perfect committee for you. Other than that, not much going on in Village Green. For the Sewer Department, in January, we worked hard to continue to address the issues that the wastewater treatment plant has been having. We received our report back from the audit that had been scheduled the previous month. Unfortunately, there were several areas of concern, even after the food dump in December that came out of the audit. The audit was thorough and documented many facets of the state of the wastewater treatment plant, processes in place, et cetera. Based on the report from the project manager, we worked on a priority list and slowly have been working to rectify and fix each area as quickly as possible, some of which is on the operational standpoint and others are mechanical. Systems had been down and are waiting on parts to fix completely. Additionally, as we think about the expansion, we've been working with the senior project manager to provide detailed SOPs for our wastewater treatment operator to follow. The board also voted to send out a RFP to our wastewater treatment plant and our water systems. And we continue to have conversations at the department level of what makes the most sense.
And if I can just jump in, the SOP would be a standard operating procedure.
Sorry.
And RFP would be a request for proposal, just for those who.
Thanks.
Don't know those acronyms.
We continue. Additionally, in mid-January, the team met with a representative from the New York Rural Water Association who has experience with sewer code and functionality of wastewater treatment plants in general. And we're seeking out the experts in the field to continue to help guide us in this endeavor. We are sympathetic to the concerns that this under-operating plant has caused and that it's why we're actively working to try to fix and repair what has been done to implement processes along the way to hopefully prevent this from happening again. We meet every other Friday. If you have any concerns about the expansion and/or are currently in the sewer use area and have comments, concerns, et cetera, please don't hesitate to reach out. There is also an expression of interest form on our website if you're wanting to connect to the sewer. Capacity required, as we discussed earlier, we are currently full. It will put you on our list of places to consider and puts you on our radar. For the Village Speed Limit Initiative, in January, we are currently waiting to hear back from the engineering team, which I got an email earlier today. I've yet to read it. So that will be in next month's report. But we are thinking about tackling a portion of the report around the school zone separately from the overall village speed limit so that we can move forward on this. The Town of Red Hook Greenway and Trails Committee, the meeting met on the second Thursday of the month at Town Hall and committee picked up where it had left off in November after the cancellation in December, continuing to discuss signage along the trails, new blazing projects with the Winnicke Land Trust, as well as wanting to collaborate with the village to create alternative or safer pathways into the village from neighborhoods and just next to it.
Can I ask what was blazing? Is that just?
Those are the like colors, like when you are hiking, you're on trails, there's like color signs. And those are called blazes. So you know which trail that you're following.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. For the Climate Smart Communities, we tabled at the Recent Repair Cafe at the Red Hook Community Center, announcing the compost program that will be launching soon for the village. And this had a lot of community engagement and residents seem to be excited about this potential program coming directly to the village center. And we are scheduled to have our next meeting February 20 at 4:00 PM, which just got confirmed today. If you're interested in joining Climate Smart, please reach out to myself. Or try to contact. And that would be it for my reports tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Appenzeller.
Good evening. The Village of Red Hook Building Department Monthly Report is as follows. There were nine building permits issued, no certificates of occupancy were issued, and there were two temporary certificates of occupancy issued. There were six certificates of compliance and two municipal searches. And there were no orders to remedy or stop work orders or do not occupy notices or court appearances. There was one complaint at 7484 South Broadway for flags, which has since been remedied. And there were five fire inspections during the month. The total of all of the activities generated $2,933 in fees. For planning board actions at the January 9 meeting, there was a site plan and public hearing for St. John Street that has been tabled to the February 13 meeting. And there was a site plan for 19 West Market Street also tabled for the February 13 meeting. And there was no zoning board of appeals meeting due to no agenda items. And for public spaces and planning update, first were the public spaces. Again, just to recap of the mission, it's to develop and facilitate creation of public park art and community spaces throughout the Village of Red Hook. Public meetings are held on the fourth Saturday of each month at 10:00 AM in person at Village Hall. However, because of a conflict with the Repair Cafe, the January meeting was held on a Sunday, January 26, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall. The regular schedule will resume during the month of February. And the key issues discussed during that meeting were for the seed library. And again, this is the Public Spaces Initiative Seed Library at the Red Hook Community Center. Donations continue to be received. So in addition to seeds from So Right Seeds in Adams, First American Meadow and Hudson Valley Seed Company have also made donations of those have been approved by the board, accepting those donations at prior meetings. And a plan for volunteers to maintain the seed library was discussed. The Repair Cafe, which Kim mentioned, was on January 25 at the Red Hook Community Center. And the PSI participated with a repair your garden table. And they were providing information on winter garden activities, like amending your soil, which right now, unfortunately, for most people is frozen solid. But hopefully, when things thawed a bit, that information will be helpful. Seed starting, and they were giving some seed packets from the seed library to folks and planting, you know, the layout for your garden. And the Repair Cafe was very well attended. And I think there was probably close to 100 items repaired. And many of those visitors did stop by the PSI table. There was a new arrangement of tables that I think works really well for that event. And tabling for groups like PSI are kind of now in the main traffic area. So it's great for any village or other groups that will be there during the quarterly repair cafes.
Was that the plan, to do the repair cafes quarterly?
That's been, yeah, from the beginning, the, it's a quarterly event.
Maybe I haven't noticed that pattern. That's great.
The Village Hall Garden Plan, the team will be setting up a meeting with the mayor sometime this month. And the goal of that meeting is to discuss potential locations, trying to find locations that, you know, best meet the needs for beautifying areas around Village Hall. And the approach would be to use native plants for any gardens that are created. And the PSI team has a list of those native plants, those which grow particularly well and are immune to pests in this area. That's, you know, the idea behind using native plants. And as far as events, excellent feedback is still coming in from community members who participated in the Fall Pumpkins in the Park event at Abraham's Park. And a date will be identified with the community center for the annual Hello Blooms event. And the PSI team will be coordinating with the Village Events Committee once some potential dates have been identified. Last year, that was sometime in, I think, the early part of June, and I believe that's what the goal is for, for this year as well. So that concludes the public spaces initiative. And then on the planning side, the village's planner Nelson Pope and Voorhees is continuing to create draft zoning language to amend the existing code. That's going to enable the village to create a Gateway North zoning district. And that's where the mixed-use proposed project on the Cooking Ham East property will be located. And after several meetings with RUCO, which is the potential developer for that property, Nelson Pope and Voorhees drafted additional zoning language addressing the affordability aspects of this project and how it could be administered and more broadly applied to larger developments throughout the village.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would just amend that a little bit. And it was really to address affordability in the Gateway North zoning district. Because if it's RUCO, RUCO will, will be administering their affordability aspect.
That's correct. That.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Does that make sense?
So there's a new consolidated set of zoning language which has a workforce housing section that contains this proposed language, and that will be reviewed in an upcoming board meeting. And the other item that came up during the discussions with RUCO is they're looking to get some certainty and some idea of a timeline for buildout of additional sewer capacity as part of its progress towards acquisition of the property from the Town of Red Hook. And that's it for the planning update.
Great. I do not have any extra general business. Does anybody have any general business they would like to discuss? Take that as a no. Any public comment?
Randy, you want to make a public comment?
Not, not required.
Yeah, not required.
Just giving you the opportunity.
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay. That was a no?
Yep.
All right. We have no executive session for this evening. I will take a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved?
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll just remind you that the vouchers are upstairs in the conference room. And what's today, Monday? So they, the checks will be cut Wednesday morning. So you have, you have until then. Wednesday morning, 9 o'clock, I would say. Any other business? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll just sort of throw out one last thing. We are, we are, there's a weather forecast Wednesday night into Thursday for not a lot, but kind of a mess. So please be aware. And then I believe this coming weekend, there's another forecast for some more snow. So as Mel Corca pointed out, if you have a sidewalk on your property, please make sure that you've cleared it 24 hours after the storm is over. And if you have anything at the end of your driveway, if it's not already buried in the snow pile, please take it in. the end of your driveway, if it's not already buried in the snow pile, please take it in and be safe, please. But with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, bye. Thank you very much.